Everyone, it's Monday, June 23rd, and we're going to go ahead and start the planning board meeting at 7:00 PM. And before we officially start, can we do the pledge of allegiance? And I'm just gonna randomly pick a board member, Wang, if you don't mind.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Constitution of America.
Thank you. And we'll go ahead and start with agenda item number one, which is roll call.
Okay, we'll take a roll call. So, board member, so.
Here.
Wang.
Here.
Cisneros.
Here.
Hum. Ariza. Ruiz.
Here.
And Sahiba.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Okay, great. And moving on to the next agenda item, which is any agenda changes?
No agenda changes from staff.
Okay. And from the board, seeing none. With that, we'll go ahead and move it to non-agenda public comments. Do we have any speakers, whether in the room or in Zoom, that wish to speak for three minutes for an item that's not on the agenda for this evening?
We don't have any speakers.
Okay, great. Going on to the consent calendar, we have meeting minutes from May 27th. Any discussion or comment? And if not, do we have any speakers that want to comment on the meeting minutes or consent calendar? Seeing none. Do we have a motion from the board?
President, we don't have a quorum.
Oh, okay. No quorum. But that will just move it forward.
Because I have to abstain.
Okay. Okay.
Same.
Two abstentions. We'll move.
Unless, unless any members who are present tonight can attest to watching the meeting and can approve the minutes, otherwise, we can bring this back at the next meeting.
Okay. Looks like we'll go ahead and do that, move it forward to the next one. So, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to the regular agenda items, which is item 5A regarding the 800 Atlantic Avenue Design Review and Use Permit, also an amendment to the mitigation negative declaration at the pool at Jean Sweeney. So, I see we have a presentation.
Good evening, President Cisneros, members of the board. Henry Dong with the Planning, Building and Transportation Department. As mentioned, this is a design review and use permit for the new aquatic center at 800 Atlantic Avenue. I'm joined tonight with the Recreation and Parks Director, Justin Long, and his design team. And then we also have members of David J. Powers, our environmental consultant, available for questions. So, I'm just gonna give a brief introduction, and then I'll hand it off to the design team to introduce the design. So, just a recap of where we are today. The, in 2014, the city adopted a mitigated negative declaration and approved the Jean Sweeney Open Space Park. And then, over the past three years, the council has taken several actions to include the aquatic center as part of the park. And so, the planning board first saw the concept design for this project back in December of last year. And then, in March of this year, the Recreation and Parks Department brought the project back to the board to share some revisions that were necessary due to some budget constraints. So, today, we're here for the final design plans, reflecting the feedback from the planning board workshops. And staff has also prepared an addendum to the adopted MND. So, pursuant to the Alameda Municipal Code, the proposed structures and perimeter fencing for the project required design review and use permit approval. And so, the request of the board tonight is to hold a public hearing and adopt the draft resolution, adopting the SEQA addendum and approving the design review and use permit application. This is the existing site. It's located in the northwest corner of the Jean Sweeney Open Space Park, near the intersection of Atlantic Avenue and Wilman Chan Way. It's a 2.35 acre site, and the 32,000 square foot aquatic center will be an all-electric facility. The existing site contains, it's vacant, but it contains some vegetation, including a large oak tree that will be retained. And the site is zoned open space district and designated as public parks and open space by the general plan. Surrounding uses include residential, office, and commercial uses, including Marina Village Office Park to the north, and the Webster Street Commercial uses to the west. This is a street view, looking down Atlantic Avenue in the northwest corner of the site. You can see Atlantic Avenue is a four-lane road with bicycle lanes and no, no on-street parking. This is a view of Wilman Chan Way, looking south. Wilman Chan Way is also a four-lane road with left-turn signal lanes and no on-street parking. And then, this is Atlantic Avenue, looking west of the site. And you can see the existing office buildings from the Marina Village Office Park. So, here's the site plan for the project. Again, it's going to be a 32,000 square foot aquatic center, all-electric. It'll have a L-shaped building and a 30-meter swimming pool and an activity pool. Also include landscaping and perimeter fencing, and 110 bicycle spaces, and 71 onsite vehicle spaces. The aquatic center is going to be operating daily, providing swim lessons, practices, public swimming, and small community events. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 5:30 AM to 9:30 PM. Saturday, 7:00 AM to 9:30 PM. Sunday, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And in addition, there will be two large swim meets per year. Those will take place on the weekends between 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM. This slide summarizes some of the revisions for the project. The architect has refined the building architecture, materials, and landscaping to address some of the comments received from the workshops. In addition, they've incorporated sustainable design features, provided spectator shading onsite. And to clarify, the improvements from AMP, that's no longer a part of the project. In terms of transportation and parking, we now including a visitor drop-off area and additional long-term bicycle parking. We've had Fair and Peers analyze the traffic, pedestrian, and bicycle safety for the site, and incorporated their suggested traffic improvement measures. The Recreation and Parks Department also developed a transportation demand management program that will incorporate their strategies. And then, we've also had Fair and Peers assess the parking demand for the facility. So, in terms of parking, the aquatic center will be adding 11 spaces to the 60 original spaces that were approved for the site, for a total of 71 onsite parking spaces. In addition, they have secured 125 overflow spaces through an agreement with the adjacent College of Alameda site. Fair and Peers estimates that approximately 90 to 95% of the visitors and staff will be driving to the site. And ARPED anticipates that the remaining share will be arriving by bike, foot, and via transit. So, Fair and Peers concludes that this is the right amount of parking for the facility, with some of the overflow required during peak hours and during large events. As part of the supplemental today, we also had a consultant look at the noise impacts for the facility. The consultant determined that the project is consistent with the city requirements for noise. With the addition of a metal panel fence on the north side of the pool, this feature will attenuate the early morning splashing from, from lap swimming. And then, lastly, the planning board asked us to highlight the general plan policies that the project is consistent with, in particular, the mobile element policies. And so, here we're listing all of those policies that the project is consistent with. And then, as mentioned before, the project had an adopted MND. Staff has prepared an addendum to the MND, and, which finds that there are no, the project does not raise any important new issues for the potentially significant impacts to, to the environment. And so, the project is also going to be required to comply with the mitigation measures that were adopted for the park. And so, staff's recommendation is to, again, to hold a public hearing and adopt the draft resolution, adopting the addendum and approving the design review and use permit application. And so, that concludes staff's presentation. And so, if there are any questions, we can ask the architect to come up to present.
Okay, great. If it pleases the board, could we have the architect do the presentation, unless there's a burning question? Okay. Thank you so much.
Good evening, President, board members. My name is Justin Long. I'm the Recreation and Parks Director and the project sponsor here for the Alameda Recreation and Parks Department. We've got our architect here, Clarence Mayack, with ELS Architecture, and he's going to walk you through the design. And so, we're going to get that queued up right now and show you where we are. Right, thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Madam President, members of the board, nice to see all of you again. And Henry, that was a great presentation on your part. I think mine is going to be really simple. Let me get right into it. So, again, this is our site. I think Henry did a good job of describing this. This is kind of one of the things we love about this project, this sort of narrow little strip of land and fitting what we're fitting there for all this great use down the road. But its proximity to the Cross Alameda Trail, all of those things contributing to just a kind of a friendlier, sort of bike-friendly, less parking, less traffic, all of those kinds of things. So, we think it's a great site for all of those reasons. I'm going to enlarge that area there in blue, and we'll get a little in closer at the site. That's a little difficult to read. Apologies. So, anyway, we, I wanted to point out the things that we have adjusted, changed, revised since we last visited. One of the big things is the sort of plaza area that has been revised a fair amount, and we've made some big adjustments. We've actually changed the grades in that area, so we don't have sort of longer and more sloped walkways in there anymore. It's also allowed us to save a fair amount on soil excavation, as well as a couple of oak trees. We're able to save them as well, north of the bigger oak tree. The bigger oak tree we've always had kind of in there as, as, as an important amenity to save. In addition to that, we've added a series of off-street improvements as well, from flashing lights to crosswalks, to holding back pedestrians in certain areas along the sidewalk. As you move to the interior of the parking lot, we have a big drop-off zone now in front of the building. There's no parking that's teeing into the, into the, in the building direction. We've added four new EV parking stalls as well, along the southern edge of the parking area. And then, right below, right at the south end of the building here, we've added eight new bicycle parking spaces and bike lockers. We've taken the bike parking area out here, and we've made the space more generous in between each of the stalls. But we were still able to actually bump up the count by a few, a few bikes. And then, this walkway over here is something we added as well. So, it starts to add a little bit more design to that end of the building. We have a lot of landscaping up against the, the fence there that's going to act as the enclosure. That fence is also designed to cut down wind that would be coming over the pool. So, the fence is pretty important. The fence itself is pretty simple. It's a, it's a chain link fence, vinyl coated, but will have a wind barrier, similar to what you would see around tennis courts. But what we've done here is we planted a pretty thick hedge. So, ultimately, when that leafs out and gets big enough, what you're going to see is, is a hedge as opposed to a fence. So, we, we would like it to be a living wall, as you sort of look around the entire pool area. There was mention in the, in the SEQA effort about a solid wall that was added to attenuate sound. That is along this area here. And we had actually had perforated corrugated metal along that wall, which is a, one of our, one of our materials that we're using throughout the building. Instead of perforated, now it's solid. So, that was the, the only change. And we think that'll, that'll still be fine visually. Let's see here. Let me advance this. This here is in here, simply if we, we can reference this again, if you have any questions about the off-site improvements. So, I'm going to go ahead and advance this one more time. Again, this is looking from the main intersection back at our project. And then, we'll hover around the building. We're now looking down at the plaza area. That, that corrugated metal material you're seeing here, here, around the corner, around this big enclosure with all of our heat pumps. And then, the solid version of that is along Atlantic over here. And here's that Atlantic view. Again, this is a solid metal corrugated fencing material, whereas it's perforated everywhere else. And we're getting a little closer. This was one of the big site changes that we made. Again, this walkway used to come out across here. It was much longer, and the building was up a little higher. Now, the building is nestled down into the landscape a little bit. So, this corner here is a little less prominent. I know there, there was some question about this idea here, and that it's, it's very different from what we're doing here with that material and elsewhere in the building. We tested sort of eliminating that, and at the end of the day, for us, it became a graphic composition, and we felt like we really needed something at that corner. So, we went ahead and, and worked with that still. The materials, as you can see, pretty simple palette. There are two main materials. It's the corrugated metal and CMU. And I have pictures of those materials coming up. First, we have this one picture. This is our main entry view, bike parking in front, again, right off of the Alameda Cross Trail. And then, one shot of the interior, the pool scene. And then, these are the materials. So, again, this is the CMU material here. So, it's this predominantly sort of white-ish color. And then, this is the green corrugated metal. We're using that to cover mechanical equipment, as well as to form kind of entry markers to the building. And then, this is the fencing material that'll go around the site. So, it is a vinyl-coated chain link material. There'll be a windscreen material over that. And then, again, what you're not seeing here would be the hedge that will grow up on either side of that. And then, this green material here, that's for the flat metal panel that you're seeing on the underside of this volume. And this clear anodized material is for all of our storefronts and entry materials. So, that's all I have. Happy to take any questions, and I'll stop there. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you all so much for the presentations. I'll bring it back to the board for any clarifying questions. Yeah, board member Ruiz?
Thank you for the update and the presentation. So, just to clarify, because the regrading, the grade level change that was internal in the pool deck, that's no longer there, correct?
Correct. So, when you walk in, you're walking, it's all one plane now.
And then, are we planning, maybe this is a question for Director Long, are we planning to have this building being LEED certified or not, and the reason behind one way or the other?
The building is built to Silver Standard, as required by code. I don't think we're going to be able to get to LEED certified on it, but we're meeting all these extra requirements by electrifying the facility. And so, I just don't know if we're, the project budget can quite get it certified through the process, but we're trying to meet all the targets.
Okay, thank you. And then, you also mentioned, I mean, in the, the program, also the SEQA report, mentioned that the water polo tournaments are not scheduled. You know, you, you noticed the two swim meets annually. And it did mention that the water polo tournaments can be requested by the school district, or I presume by the club as well. Will that, would those events affect the programming part of the SEQA findings?
They shouldn't, they should be within those same parameters and hours when that happens. Again, it's, it's not a regular basis element, and it would only happen in the hours between that 9:00 and that 6:00 PM, where we would be within our noise ordinance. So, it wouldn't affect the SEQA findings.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Board member Sahiba?
Yeah, thank you for the update and presentation. If I understood correctly, the corrugated metal that you have, it's no longer perforated, or, or you have some perforated and some solid?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. That wasn't clear. So, essentially, think of all the perforated metal you saw, excuse me, all the metal you saw, the green metal is perforated, with the exception of a stretch of it that occurs along Atlantic. And if I, I'll show you where that is. Getting close. Everything you've seen so far is perforated. It's this area right here. And the concern brought about by the SEQA folks was that noise from this pool would travel outside and across the street. So, that, that's what that's providing protection from right now.
I see. But it's, it's still the corrugated metal?
Still the corrugated metal, just without the perforations, right.
And then, the, the flat metal panels?
Yes.
That are in your material board, they're just on the underside of certain forms?
Just, right, right. In fact, wherever we have these volumes hovering, on the underside of those, that's how we're closing it off. It's with the, with the flat metal panel.
Okay, I see.
So, it's a soffit treatment, for the most part, soffit and ceiling treatment.
Okay. And then, I, the other question I have is, I understood that no longer are you having these digital screens? You, you had presented something about that last time.
We, we did. And I'm keeping my fingers crossed, the architect in me. I, I hope we, we get to have a collaboration down at once in, but I'll bring Justin on.
Okay.
Yeah, I, thank you. I can clarify. So, AMP is moving at a slower process than we are currently.
I see.
And so, they're, we're looking at almost like two projects. They'll come and add their additions later, as they can get their work in order. So, what you're seeing is still being considered. It's just not going to be as part of this build-out. They will come and add on top of that. So, we're just trying to make sure that we're moving the project as fast as we can for construction cost mitigation, with AMP being able to come and, and add those elements later.
I see. Okay. All right, thank you. Those are my questions, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, board member Wang?
This might also be a Director Long question. Thank you for the presentations, by the way. I saw a discussion of the overflow spaces, the lease agreement, as not quite hammered out yet, but just wondering about the intention of how that's going to work. Is, are those 125 oversp- overflow spaces intended as, you know, in the lease agreement, there will always be 125 overflow spaces, or, or is it a total of 125 spaces to be shared amongst the annexed users? And you get what you get, depending on what's happening at that moment.
So, it is a shared use, and it's primarily for nights and weekends, when the College of Alameda programming is not happening at the same time. The draft agreement that we've almost finalized does give the College of Alameda the right, if they're running programs, that they take priority, and that would take the two parties to coordinate. So, if they were having a large event or a large program, say, on a weekend, we would coordinate with them scheduling to make sure that we don't have a large event scheduled at the same time. And so, that, we have that level of dialogue with the college that we would do that. But the, the purpose really is, is just to serve as overflow, should we hit that. Like in the Fair and Peers study, there's only periods of time when we would exceed the needed spaces that we are providing. And so, it's really just to catch up those, those little extras that, we just want to make sure that we had some partnership with trying to confine the amount of spaces at the facility, based on the research that we did with the operating model, and, you know, with other aquatic centers, and space per people, per water, for parking. You know, it's, it's a pretty big range, but what we've tried to do is look at what the programming needs are, and try to match it exactly to what the parking requirement would be, knowing we would exceed it on special events, and otherwise, knowing we and otherwise, knowing we potentially have to partner with College of Alameda.
Okay, and it seems to me that some of the conflict might be happening in the summer months then? Because a lot of the overages and demand are happening in those summer months, right? And that's, and summer weekdays in particular, not necessarily, I'm just guessing, when those College of Alameda classes, in other words, they might still be running classes?
There could be, but I think that when our programming starts is really when they're winding down.
Okay.
I mean, our heavy programming starts June 15th and runs through basically the first week of August. That is our heavy, heavy programming for summer programs and everything else. And so I think there'll be enough overlap with the facility. Plus, I want to also acknowledge that the Gene Sweeney trail connectors are being built. And so they're going to start construction soon. And so we will have more pedestrian access to the north and the south of the park at Eighth and Wood. And then a connection between 860 and 890. Then again, further along down as part of the Blue Rise Venture Office Park, the Marina Village Office Park. So there's going to be a lot more pedestrian connections north and south for this project as well.
Great, thank you. I have a few more questions that are probably more geared towards staff. So the Fair and Pierce memo cited commercial recreation as the use here. But this, and also cited a max parking requirement associated with the commercial recreation use. But in the staff report and in previous staff discussions, staff has characterized this as basically not having a zoned parking standard minimum or maximum.
Yeah, to clarify that, yeah. I think Fair and Pierce was using what they estimated as like the closest in our code. But our actual code says that park facilities is decided by the planning board, the actual requirements.
Okay, so that part of the memo is not correct then?
Yeah.
Okay. To go back to the point that Fair and Pierce drew the conclusion that the vehicular parking was the right size. Is there anyone, could you speak to that a bit more? I didn't see that quite drawn quite so affirmatively in the report. So I'd like to just drill down on that a bit.
From reading the Fair and Pierce report, they explained that throughout the day, the 71 spaces could accommodate most of the parking, except for during some of the peak hours where there would be roughly about 12 to 19 spaces that we needed to go through the overflow. And then during the large events, since everybody would be driving in pairs, then the parking facility would accommodate most of that and we would have roughly about 12 or 19 that would go to the overflow parking.
Okay, so I think the conclusion that I'm hearing, and I took a peek at it again just now, is that what the memo is saying is that there's enough parking? It's not saying necessarily that it's the right size, but that it's serving the demand?
Yeah, that would be more accurate.
Okay. Okay, and then I'm wondering if you could speak to the mode share assumptions that were underlying the memo? For, I think, main event or typical uses, we were looking at a mode share assumption of 90% of auto trips or 90% trips as auto. And then for the larger event uses, we were looking at 100% auto?
Yeah, that's, that sounds correct. He was estimating like 90 to 95% auto for, I think, regular daily. And then I think it was 100% for the larger events, yeah.
So that seems high to me. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand why the assumption is so high.
I guess I interpreted that since the larger events are kind of a more regional draw, there would be more people driving to the facility. And then I think he was, they were anticipating that the daily operations would be without, like a TDM plan being implemented, so.
Okay, and then there isn't a mode share target, is there? I didn't see one.
I don't recall if there was one or not, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
President Sisneros, may I just interject and make a clarifying comment? Regarding the discussion earlier, the question about the citation of the commercial recreation use versus open space. In this particular case, because the swim center is in a public park, it is a public facility. Our zoning code allows the planning board to make that judgment. But if this were to be a private facility, this would be under the definition of a commercial recreation use and that parking standard would be applied here.
Okay, but it's not applicable here, as you said.
Correct. In this case, because it's a city facility, we can defer to the planning board's discretion.
Thanks for that clarification. Any other board questions? Okay, seeing none. I think I just have one more and you could, I don't know. You can sit if you want. The, I, it's helpful for me to have like some kind of comparison. So this might not be a fair question, but I'm just curious. Is there like other parks with this swimming pool size? Like I wonder how like relative it is to the parking from different parks in different communities? Like is it comparable? Like, and I asked the question just because there does seem to be some public comment concerns around the parking. So any insights into that?
Facilities in the city, you mean? Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess not in Alameda, but other jurisdictions? Like, are there any, I don't know, any references?
That was what Fair and Pierce was using as the basis for what they determined, so, yeah. But yeah, I don't know personally, off the top of my head.
So President Sisneros, good question. We actually come across this a bunch. And as you've all know, again, there, from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, there are never any requirements. And it's always, we're always coming up with cities that have done similar facilities. So to your question, the city of Piedmont has two pools that are, they're about three months away from opening. Identical sizes, pretty darn close. Same building size. We provided zero parking there. They just couldn't do it. So again, very walkable, bikeable, all of those things. There will still be people driving and people will find street parking, but we provided zero parking. In fact, to build that center, we actually had to take away six spaces. So we were operating at a negative. Go to city of Mountain View, again, very similar pool sizes, two of them, similar building size. And there, I want to say we're providing less parking for aquatics than we are here. So there's another one. And then city of Santa Ana, very similar pool project again. Two pools, roughly same size. They have about 100 spaces. That's because those spaces were there. Where essentially, we didn't change the parking lot at all. But one could say that those are all for aquatics. That's probably a community where there's going to be less driving though. It's just kind of interesting. So it truly is all over the map. We're building one in South San Francisco right now, Orange Memorial Park. That's a much bigger center, probably twice the size. And we've added, I want to say 30 spaces to their existing count. So again, it really is all over the place, so.
Okay, yeah. It sounds like it really depends on the community and like where the access is and all of that. So there's a lot of factors that take into account. So, yeah, okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Yes, Board Member Su?
So just a follow-up question on that. And I appreciate you providing all those examples. You know, I think in this project, the original, I think, Sequoia study or, you know, project with Gene Sweeney, I think allocated 60 spaces and then I think 10 were added to this project specifically. So what led the team to arrive at those 10 additional spaces?
I guess Board Member Su. The, what we also are trying to consider here is we're also at the works for building the community garden as well. So when that was originally planned for those 60 spaces, that was only for the community garden as well as a playground at that end. We are now adding an aquatic center plus the community garden for a shared parking lot. So therefore, the additional spaces was not just only in consideration to what the aquatics needs are, but there was very close attention paid to the operating plan for how many people we anticipated at the facility and what we anticipated for the number of people who would be driving at that point, which is why we came up with that number. We do think that there probably will be some conflict at some point with the community garden usage and this, which will really require us to utilize the College of Alameda overflow parking. So it's, two uses are happening also in the same. We have to look at the park as not just our little project site within it, but there's other work happening adjacent to this as well.
And where's the garden located relative to the aquatic center? If you already know or general idea?
Yeah, so it'll be located to the southeast portion across the trail. So where Eighth comes up, it'll then go to the east of that, on that side. So they'll still have to access across the trail through that plaza area. Get to it, yeah.
Oh, we have one more question. Board Member Wang?
Apologies, that's Board Member Su's question just surfaced, another question for me. So I actually didn't realize that this parking was meant to serve the community garden as well. Is that right? I'm understanding that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So I don't think the Fair and Pierce memo that we have here contemplates a community garden use in its demand analysis, does it?
It does not. That's why we sought the overflow parking. Because we were looking at what we would probably need in order to combine both uses.
Okay, I think that might be missing in some of the discussion here. Because if it's in there, I missed it. So that's, it's important to know. Thank you.
That's helpful distinction, so. Thanks to all the questions and for responding to those questions. With that, I think we'll go ahead and the staff is conferring, so I'm going to delay. We'll open it up soon to public comment unless, is there any clarification that the staff wants to provide? Nope, okay. So with that, do we have many speakers interested in providing comment?
Yes, we do, sorry.
All right. At least one online. Three, four, okay. I think we could still keep it to three minutes. So how about we start with an online speaker and then we'll go to the room, since we just have one?
Okay, so we have Cindy Johnson online and we will allow you to talk.
Good evening. I'm calling on behalf of BikeWalk Alameda to reiterate and expand on a few points in our letter. First, we're glad to see the addition of bike link lockers in the project. It wasn't clear from the presentation, though, whether there's enough space to easily get bikes in and out. It's important that there be adequate access and maneuverability. Too often, bike parking is installed in ways that make it difficult to use and it would be good to avoid that here. We're also glad to see transportation demand management included in the conversation, but we hope the TDM program can be strengthened and do more. The current assumptions around driving rates, parking demand and the size of the parking lot seem based on norms from highly car-dependent areas where 90 to 95% of trips are by car. This doesn't reflect Alameda's climate and mobility aspirations, which include reducing vehicle trips, cutting emissions and improving street safety. As an island city committed to climate leadership, we should proactively plan for infrastructure and programs that encourage sustainable transportation, rather than perpetuating patterns that have contributed to the climate crisis. This site, right on the cross Alameda trail and near public transit, was specifically chosen for its great accessibility. So why design it with the assumption that only 5 to 10% of trips will be made by transit or active transportation? Why not leverage the strategic location choice and aim for something more ambitious and in line with our values and vision for the future? Something we know is possible because we've seen it in action at other facilities. A more balanced transportation strategy could also reduce the size of the parking lot considerably, keeping costs down while preserving valuable open space. In our letter, we suggested several ideas. We also want to elevate two additional suggestions, which we support and urge you to include as conditions of your approval tonight. One, have ARPD's Aquatic Center team explore joining the Alameda Transportation Management Association, the local nonprofit with expertise in TDM solutions in and around Alameda. Two, as suggested in correspondence from Transportation Commissioner Dara Abrams, have ARPD's aquatic team return to the planning board with a revised TDM plan that includes paid parking on day one, as well as mode split targets. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Next, we'll go to the room, Shayla Dida. And apologies if I mispronounced.
So, not sure how this works. And yeah, is that okay?
Yeah, make sure to have your mouth like three inches away from the mic so folks in the Zoom or online can hear you.
Okay, great. So on that note, the community garden. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Shayla and I'm a resident of Ninth Street. I live three houses down from the Gene Sweeney Park. So I'm here today to ask about the beautiful community garden that was not only approved as part of the original plans for the park, but has been much anticipated for that space in our neighborhood and with gardeners all around Alameda. So I don't think I need to elaborate on the environmental and social significance of a community garden. But this particular garden excelled in its design, a true masterpiece, which included many important resources. A fruit tree orchard, garden beds, a tool library, education space, and most importantly, food security for Alameda residents. When I bought my home, I did so because of the original Gene Sweeney plans. It wasn't just a regular park. It reflected a set of values, a commitment to investing in beautiful public resources for everyone to enjoy. And I recognize that the swimming pool also reflects those values, which is why I'm asking how these two projects come together and where the community garden will be situated, which we just heard, within the new plans for the Aquatic Center and Gene Sweeney Park. A community garden has so much potential for individuals, families, businesses, faith groups at a relatively low cost. So I urge the planning board and the Aquatic Center architects to keep in mind the core vision of Gene Sweeney and ensure that the community garden is included within the plans for the park, including all of the elements you guys have discussed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for your comment. Next, we have Marla Koss.
Hi, I'm Marla Koss. I am representing Alameda Backyard Growers. I am Secretary of the Board of Directors of Alameda Backyard Growers. I am also one of the original steering committee members for Gene Sweeney Community Garden and that's why I'm specifically here tonight. When there was no aquatic center in 2014 planned where, in the northwest corner, where the aquatic center is going now, that was community garden. That was an urban orchard, a forager's lane filled with fig trees, et cetera, et cetera. I was one of the people that helped plan that. We worked tirelessly over the years to, as a steering committee, to try to get everything done. I even read the 269-page report on the soil. So that's how, that's how important this thing was for us. The way, it's kind of ironic that it turns out the reason that the Aquatic Center is now going to be placed there is because during the pandemic, there were so many people at the food bank, especially elderly Asians, who really wanted to plant things and grow things, but they couldn't. And one of our board members was, who was young enough, was volunteering there. Some of us seniors weren't allowed. But she was seeing all these hungry seniors who really wanted- who really wanted a place to, you know, grow their own tomatoes, et cetera. So we got together with the then director of ARPD, Amy Waldridge. There were three of us Alameda Backyard Growers board members and Amy. We got together and tried to brainstorm, what are we going to do? Well, it finally came out, this big light bulb above everybody's head. Put the aquatic, put an aquatic center there, share the parking lot and the infrastructure, and put the community garden, shove it slowly, maybe a little further eastward away from traffic and dust that might be blowing onto people's community garden plots, et cetera. We thought this was a good idea. Amy Waldridge went to Jim Sweeney, Gene Sweeney's husband, and to Dorothy Freeman, who was another member of the Gene Sweeney Open Space Park Committee. They said, yes, let's do it. We're just tired of waiting. 2014, January was our first workday there, and Jim Sweeney was still out there with his wheelbarrow. In any case, so here we are. Now, I hear social media complaining about parking. Mulch, a two cubic foot bag of mulch weighs 50 pounds. Gardeners can't carry that on a bicycle. We need those parking spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. And last speaker, John Waldman.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity. My name is John Waldman. I live on Eighth Street, just about four or five houses down from the entrance to Sweeney Park. And when we first moved into our house, that was still open, but it was just a field soon after the drive-in had closed. And we're very excited about the park being put in there. It's a great opportunity to improve the community. But the fact that our street leads into the park, of course, has meant a lot more traffic on our street as far as foot traffic, especially now because it's just a park at the moment. But once it's a pool, there's a lot of talking about parking tonight, which makes me glad that I'm not the only one. I'm just concerned in one area that once this opens, you know, our block, people are driving toward the pool. They come down our block, the park is right there, and I'm expecting, you know, a lot of parking issues on our block. We have a quiet block with kids and pets and all of that, just like all over Alameda, which is why we love it here. So I was just wanting to make sure that the board was aware of our concerns about increased parking. People aren't going to want to go around the block all the way to the other side to get into the parking lot. They're just going to park there and walk in. So that could be a problem in the future. And the other thing I wanted to mention is I know there are a lot of mitigation plans. I actually read through all of the planning documents tonight and about the construction of this project. Just want to, again, register concerns about noise and those kinds of things. And I really don't think that Eighth Street, because it's already, there's a road already into the park there. I'm concerned that it might be seen as an easy way to bring construction equipment or trucks into the park. So I really don't think Eighth Street is an appropriate route for trucks to go into the park or to park heavy equipment, or they sometimes stack materials and things on the street as a storage area until they need them. So I'm just wanting to make sure that Eighth Street is considered not a place for construction. I assume that the construction trucks will go in through Atlantic or whatever, but just wanted to emphasize that. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comments? No more public comments? Okay.
No more comments.
Okay. All right, with that, I'm going to, yes, we, did you want to provide a comment? You did? Okay. Yes, go ahead. Looking at the staff and they're nodding yes, so go ahead and. Well, go ahead and put three minutes on the clock. Okay.
Excuse me, President. Please ask the public to fill out the public comment form so we have records of them.
Thank you. Yeah, great point. And we're going to go ahead and, well, did you want to just get that afterwards? Okay, great, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much for taking my question. My name is Emily Anderson. I'm new to Alameda. I'm very excited to be here. The project sounds amazing. I have just a couple of questions on clarification, which may have been answered, but I didn't hear. Will it be 100% solar powered? And the other question was, it sounded like there will be some, comment was that there will be some big events, which means there will be a stadium seat load-in. But the indoor design looked very small for allowing that type of seating in. And then since they're removing portions of the park and the greenery, I would hope that it will be reallocated at another space in Alameda. Those are my comments, questions. They're all cheated a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And see no more, oh, okay. Staff, do we have capacity to take another public comment? Yes? Okay, all right. And similarly, if you could fill out the slip after you're done. And is there, okay, before we start, is there any more public speakers? Okay, all right, and this will be the last speaker. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry, this is my first time coming to one of these, so. Yeah, in general, so I bike to work every day through John Sweeney Open Park. And so, you know, I think I have a perspective that might be a little unique. And in general, I think the project's a great idea. It's good to have third spaces that aren't just work and home, places for, you know, the community to grow, places for all ages. But I do have a criticism about parking, of course, which is, you know, everyone's talking about. My main perspective is I think that it should be paid parking. I do hear the concerns from people who know that they will have to drive for whatever reason, say it be health concerns perhaps. In that case, you would prefer then that other people do not drive in order to reduce the traffic and reduce the risk that you come to park and there's no parking spaces left. You know, personally, I find it funny. People think free parking, they hear that and they think that's reasonable. If you suggested free rent, people would think you're crazy. But, you know, the main drivers of the cost of both parking and rent here within the Bay Area is land use. And so, you know, I have a one-bedroom apartment. It's about three parking spaces large, and I pay $2,400 a month for it, right? Like, the main part there is land use. It makes sense to me that parking should be something that is paid for, especially when a lot of people can't afford to drive. Parking, to me, free parking seems like subsidies for the richest people in our community, and that just doesn't seem fair. Lastly, you know, here in the Bay Area, I really like it, but it is one of the densest and least affordable regions of America. And so I think we need to be careful before building infrastructure for the most space inefficient and most expensive modes of transportation. The 90 to 95% estimation for how many people choose to drive to this location, I think that makes sense if you offer free parking. It is the most convenient option for people on an individual basis, but it can also be a tragedy of the commons where if everyone just chooses to do the thing that is most convenient for them and is an individual, it ends up being worse for everyone else because you end up having more traffic and less green space for people to use. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your comment. All right. And with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Thank you, everyone. Before we get back to the board for discussion, I was wondering if staff wanted to react to any other comments or questions brought up, maybe in particular, the community garden. It seemed like there was like some questions or thoughts around that. And if not, then we get into it in discussion if there's no clarifying items.
Again, Director Long here for ARPD. We've worked with the Alameda Backyard Growers in finding an alternative location for the community garden and citing it to the southeast corner, making sure that we're including that. It's not included as part of this project, but we've committed additional funds to build it out. And so we've already had some preliminary meetings about that. We need to continue those. But this infrastructure will help to support that infrastructure, so electricity, water, those types of activities that normally wouldn't have already been there. So we're doing that. As for the question about solar, this is an electrified facility. It does not have solar energy going into it from the site right now. AMP is looking at doing that demonstration project where they will be adding some solar to it. But AMP currently provides all green energy to Alameda through green energy sources as is. So there's no CO2 gases being produced to provide power to the city of Alameda.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion, reactions, comments. Board Member Luis.
President Sisneros, I do have a follow-up question for the staff and just for comparison purposes. Probably one of the highest-used public parks, besides Gene Sweeney, at least to my knowledge, is the Riddler Park at the corner of Otis and Grand Street. That is used by soccer, Little League, you name it. Just curious, how many parking spaces are we providing for that park?
Director Long may have, may know the answer to that question.
All right, thank you. Currently, Riddler does not have any parking other than being surrounded by street parking on three sides. But the Wood School renovation is coming, which will provide 34 parking spaces adjacent to Riddler Park.
And a follow-up question, if I may. How many complaints have we received so far regarding parking for Riddler Park?
We get quite a few complaints from neighborhoods and neighbors about access, parents, difficult access for finding places to get their kids to soccer. I don't have a monetized number for you to share, but we do get a variety of complaints, especially from the neighborhood, because parents will park on those streets and then cut through. And so it has been a little bit difficult, especially with the renovation at Lum and Wood.
So it's been exacerbated by the renovation?
Correct.
Do we ever have to actively tow anybody because somebody's driveway was blocked?
I would have to go through and double-check our records with parking enforcement, but I think most people are decent enough not to block people in. But it still takes up the neighborhood spaces that are available.
Which is public streets?
Correct.
And it's paid by the public, which means it's owned by the city, everybody in the city? That's now isolated to that neighborhood?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Board Member Wang?
Yeah, thank you, everyone, including public commenters. It's a nice project. It's good to see it come this far. Appreciate all the efforts that staff and the project team have put into this. We've had a recurring theme since the December workshop around parking. We're hearing a lot of comments around that tonight. And we do have a TDM report to look at now, but I'm stuck on some components of the report. The logic just isn't ticking and tying for me. And we just learned, I guess, that the report is talking about a single use against the parking program, whereas the intention is that the parking is shared amongst different programs. So I'm not sure what to do with that right now. I feel like we missed a little bit of information that was really important for our review of this project. But I'm going to continue with my comments because I do think they still apply. So we've heard a number of times that this project is a sustainable one. It's powered by sustainable, you know, technology. It's all electric. It aligns with the general plans. Goals for sustainable transportation because it's right on the cross-Alameda Trail. We're providing 110 bike parking spaces. We're adjacent to several bus lines. All of that is great. So going back to my question earlier, I'm a little bit stuck on why, you know, we chose a site that was transit-rich, that was right on the cross-Alameda Trail, and then our technical analysis assumes that 90 to 100% of trips are auto trips. It's not quite adding up to me. So why aren't people taking the bus or riding their bikes? And if they are, shouldn't that be reflected in the transportation demand analysis and the parking demand analysis? To put that another way, why are we using the most conservative car trip assumptions to drive a similarly conservative parking demand analysis when we also have 125 overflow spots next door? Henry, I wonder if we could pull up the figures in the transportation memo to just look at them while I talk through the next pieces of my comment? So those are figures nine, 10, and 11 in the transportation demand memo or the parking demand memo. I forget which one.
President Sisneros, while staff is trying to pull up that exhibit, may I just take a moment of time to explain how staff approached this parking requirement? So first of all, a question for the board. Anytime we, the board, looks at a development project, the standard we use comes from the zoning ordinance. And in particular, chapter 30-7 is our off-street parking regulations. Table A provides the standards for which we apply the specific number of parking spaces per project. In this case, Swim Center, Aquatic Center is not listed, right? The closest definition to it is this is a form of commercial recreation, although this is, as I noted earlier, a public facility. That, I would say, from the, per the code, that is the closest metric we would apply to this project. And under that table, for commercial recreation uses, the maximum amount of parking that the project could provide would be three spaces per thousand. So given that this is a 32,000 square foot facility, you do the math. Maximum is close to 98, 99 spaces. The project is providing 71 spaces. Now, we also understand that, and in the code, it also explains that to exceed the maximums, a project may ask for a use permit. And if it were to ask for a use permit approval, it would also have to supplement the standards by performing a demand analysis to provide a TDM plan. And so in this case, the project is not proposing to exceed the standard, but to help the city, to help the planning board and public understand how we try to right-size the amount of parking. And also keep in mind that this is a shared-use situation. Originally, the approved park plan before the aquatic center, the approved plan shows 60 spaces to serve the park. This project, adding on the Swim Center, we're adding 11 spaces to a total of 71. So for staff to understand whether this is a right-size amount of parking, we understand the code, we meet the code requirement, no doubt about it. This project meets the AMC requirement established by the City Council. But to understand if this is, whether this is an appropriate amount of parking, understanding that this is also a shared-use situation, we hired a consultant. And the consultant memo in this case, yes, it provides us with sequoia analysis, but it also is a supplemental piece of information because it looks at other swim centers, looks at other cities, to try to give us a little bit more information to decide whether this is right or wrong. is right or wrong. And I know a lot of the comments are being critical about the project proposing too much parking, but I think when you take into a package of the AMC standard that this is shared use, we also prepared a demand study as a point of reference, and there will be TDM measures implemented. And I think in the comment letter we received today, there were also additional suggestions that we could probably incorporate. And so I would like the city, the planning board, to think about the package of all of the above to decide whether this is the right amount of parking. And because that is one of the findings you will have to make tonight to approve the project, is whether the project is consistent with the zoning ordinance specifically, as well as all of the other policies that the city has adopted. So hopefully, that helps in your decision-making.
And President Sisneros, if I could just tack on to that, that was a very helpful framework, I think. In addition to what the director said, the parking and level of service, traffic intersection impact is, of course, no longer a SEQA issue. Instead, SEQA now looks at vehicle miles traveled, which is a completely different type of analysis. However, the, as the director stated, we did bring on a traffic consultant to analyze whether the parking was sufficient in response to some public comments, and also to assess whether there were any intersection demand impacts. Even though that's not a SEQA issue, these sort of compatibility issues are relevant to the findings that you need to make for design review.
Thank you. Board Member Wang, did you want to continue with your comment?
Yes, thank you. So thank you both for that. I think I might be a little bit stubborn on this issue. There is no parking standard here, is that right? Or am I wrong?
Not specifically for an aquatic center. Yes, you are correct.
Okay. So I mean, I think, and that's consistent, by the way, with the last, with what we heard in the last two workshops. So where my mind goes there, then, is we look for ways to understand how to right-size the parking, as you said, right? And one of those ways, I think, is certainly to look at what the nearest zoning designation might be if it weren't a public facility. I think another way is to ask about comps in other jurisdictions, which is useful, maybe even comps in our own jurisdiction. And I think the next way would be to look at the demand, right? And to think about, what is the baseline mode split that we would expect here if we absolutely did nothing? And then to think about, to me, what is the mode split that we want, given everything, all the work that the city's done with the active transportation plan and the city's climate plan? We also have other considerations. I mean, land, as one of the public commenters pointed out, is in freeze. Every land, every piece of land that you dedicate to parking is, has an opportunity cost, right? So that's what we're here to talk about. I mean, that land can be put toward something with higher ecological value, or higher recreational value, or higher community or social value. It could go toward the community garden even. So if you took away, just hypothetically, if you took away half of the parking, you'd probably be giving 12,000 square feet back to open space uses. So, Henry, could you go to figure nine, please? So, thank you. So this, I thought was interesting. So this is non-summer weekdays, which means, this is talking about demand three seasons out of the year, five days out of the week. And we have parking supply here that looks like it's, in this scenario, kind of tuned for the peak of the parking demand. And every other hour in this day is basically, I would say, the sweet spot for meeting the parking demand, irrespective of the peak, is probably somewhere in the range of 20 to 40 spaces? And then let's, if we could look at figure 10 briefly, because that's where we know that a lot of the activity is happening. This is a little bit more consistent, right, with, the parking supply is more consistent with the hourly and demand of a typical summer weekday. But again, that's one season out of the entire year. So if we go to figure 11 now, which I think was weekends? So again, irrespective of the peak, I think probably that sweet spot of hitting your more typical demand or average demand might be somewhere like 40 to 60 spaces? I think I would just, I would articulate, I think philosophically, generally from a land use perspective and a design and development perspective, you know, if we were speaking from the point of view of private development, we would want to tune the parking supply closer to what's more typical, rather than to the peak. You can always manage to the peak with different or extra strategies when that peak happens. And in fact, we have that strategy already on paper here. So it's a little bit, it's a little bit confusing to me why we're taking the first step of assuming 90 to 100% of people coming here, or of trips coming and going are in cars, when, again, we're on the cross-Alameda Trail, we're building out more pedestrian walkways, we're right next to two or more bus lines, and then we're translating that into a parking supply that basically oversupplies parking demand the majority of the year. I guess I would say this, these series of figures and this memo would be a lot more helpful if it layered in the community garden use, so that we could understand how the parking supply serves both uses. Because right now, it just looks like it's oversupplying, when what it could be doing is bringing that green line down lower, and then having the peak be served by the 125 overflow spaces. Because nowhere on any of these charts do we see demand that even exceeds the 125. So if we had a scenario where we were closer to Piedmont's Aquatic Center with zero parking, we could theoretically serve typical and peak demand with just the overflow parking. So, anyway, the point, the point that I'm making is, we're looking at trade-offs here, right? There's a cost to everything. There's certainly an incremental cost for the site work for that parking, but there's also a cost, there's an opportunity cost to the land. That land could be community garden uses, it could be something else. We're also working in a world of other goals. So the cost of creating an overabundance of parking that may be free is that we are working at cross purposes against mode-split goals that we have in our active transportation plan, and goals that we have in our climate plan that are meant to nudge people toward more sustainable modes of transit. So I'm not, I'm not quite seeing that here. And I do think that I need to see that before I can affirmatively support the project, including its transportation piece. Otherwise, you know, the project is fine, and I'm happy to support it outside of that piece.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. I'll open up to other board members to chime in or respond. Board Member Sahiba?
Yeah, thank you. I was gonna, I'll make some comments specifically on the architecture of the building here in a second, but I wanted to stick to the parking discussion for a moment, since it's gone a little bit more in-depth. So essentially, the east side of Gene Sweeney Park has a parking lot. It has, I mean, I've parked there myself. It's got a, I wouldn't say abundance of spaces, but it's got the adjacent programmatic areas that I think creates demand for that parking. I'm not sure if there's, what strategy was utilized originally to determine the quantity of parking on the parking that's been built within the park? And I'm not arguing for, again, just more parking on the other side. I'm just trying to, I know that there, with additional program that's added, which will create demand, there's got to be some infrastructure in place. And I would tend to agree if the College of Alameda has this parking that's, again, underutilized, which, again, I don't know, I don't think this study quite determined how much underutilized that parking is at the College of Alameda. So I don't know if it can be a primary source of parking, or it really needs to be the secondary overflow source of parking. But it is strategically located very close to where the Aquatic Center is proposed to be. So that, and, you know, there's obviously a sea of parking all around with all the businesses that are there. Again, I don't know how underutilized or, you know, challenged that parking is currently. So it's hard for me to say if, you know, there's some strategy in place there. So in saying that, yes, I can see all the benefits of figuring out how to use underutilized existing parking. It would just be a question if, you know, the, I guess, the project has considered that or not to this date. And maybe, I don't know if it's in this meeting or subsequent follow-up, we can get a greater understanding of what's happening on that front. But going, so those are my comments on parking. I think we may need to circle back and understand how we can, you know, better understand what this means. So going to the design package that was submitted, first, I appreciate all the level of detail that's been put into it. And I want to focus in on A040, which is the massing axonometric that was included. First off, you know, I appreciate that everything, as far as all the metal panel that's vertical, I guess, has gone to, you know, corrugated, perforated panel, except that one stretch along Atlantic Avenue. What I did have a design comment on is that, as that stretch of solid metal panel, I don't know if you want to put up that diagram that I'm citing here on A040, as it continues west and sort of turns back, there's a notch, and it's 14 feet wide of two panels, it looks like, before it goes into the, into the chain-link fencing. And everywhere else, I feel like there's been a strategic sense of keeping it volumetric, and at that point, it becomes plainer. And my question, I guess, or my recommendation would be not to have those two panels at that very end of location. Yeah, so you can zoom in on the upper right-hand corner there, closest to the fence line where the, on Atlantic, where the metal panel notches in, and it says 14 feet. So those two panels at the very end, you know, when you're approaching on Atlantic, because you're going to see that edge, I feel like it's going to not read volumetric, because it's going to be just a plain, a solid panel, and then a high fence adjacent to it. And one of those two things needs to wrap, and I feel like the fence probably volumetrically makes more sense than the panel. So when you just look at it in elevation, I can understand why it feels like a continuous reading, but three-dimensionally, it, you're looking at it on edge. The other thing I didn't quite understand is why the fence on that west side is 15 feet tall, and then it dips back down. It's just along that western edge. Is there, is there a reason? Maybe I should have asked earlier, what, why that's happening, yeah?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's different heights. That's a result from the wind analysis that was then? So they gave us heights to work with, and
I see.
We pretty much followed that. I have a, I have a question, just if you could clarify again, what area were you talking about where it feels plainer to you?
Just as that taller fence, the 15-foot-tall fence, approaches Atlantic Avenue, it ends, and then there's two vertical metal panels that just bisected. And so when you approach the, you know, the Aquatic Center from Atlantic on that side, you'll just see that in plain. While everywhere else, it's three-dimensional, it kind of turns, you see what I'm saying?
Right, right, right.
So I found that a moment that's not, that's quite unique in the overall project. It doesn't quite happen anywhere else. Even when it turns around, as you move east on Atlantic, it turns back, it stays metal, and then it, but it turns back into the building. So it feels consistent. It's a wrapper at that point, but here, it ascends. It's kind of like a tail. So anyways, that's, okay, I get the fence part. I wish there was a way of transitioning the heights and not just stepping it, but a way of kind of connecting, even if I had to go taller on one end, just to somehow slope it down or manage the
Right.
The transition.
I think there's a way to look at that, yeah.
That's a bit more three-dimensional, right? So that's one comment. And then, I think I've made this comment before, but again, I think the conceptual framework of all the metal is pretty clear. Only, it breaks down for me at that point that I just described, and then it breaks down for me at that point where it just hugs the CMU block on further down Atlantic at the furthest east point. And I know it's more signage at that point, I guess, for wayfinding purposes. I'm wondering why it can't just be pulled up to meet the datum of what's happening directly to the right of it, which is, which is taller? And so those two plainer element, or that volumetric element would be at the same height as what's happening to the right? Because then I feel like, again, it's calling a clear demarcation of arrival on that intersection, or on that, on that corner of the building. But it being slid down is the only, it could be, I think, a bit more elegant of an elevation if that got pulled up to be at the same height, if that makes sense, and then wrapped around.
Yeah, I see what you're suggesting. All right, we can look at that as well. I think both of those areas.
Yeah. So if it can't, then I'd rather just eliminate it and just put the signage on the CMU block, because you've done that elsewhere as well.
Right.
Which I'm totally fine with as well, because I don't, not trying to create another little lantern or condition on one end. If there's too many of these, maybe the hierarchy tends to get lost. So it'd be my preference, I'd actually have simplified if the metal was not there, but if it's got to be there, then I think it needs, in my mind, needs to be pulled up. And then my last comment, I mean, I'm glad that it's all gone perforated, but the solid metal panel that's on the soffit condition, can it not just still continue to be perforated metal? Is there a reason why it needed to go solid?
No, that panel, you can get perforated as well.
But can it just be the corrugated? Can it just be the same material?
I suppose. I think we felt that the corrugated was all on vertical surfaces, and when we went under, when it became a soffit or a ceiling, that it could be a different material. And so I think that's where we were coming from on that.
It doesn't happen often. I think it only happens once, right? At that entry point? Or does it happen somewhere else?
Yeah, the entry point, and then there's a little bit of an overhang. And then there's a little bit of an overhang of the volume. I'll call it the volume.
On Atlantic?
On the pool deck, on the interior.
Oh, yes.
It's the big area, right? So it's along that arrow and then along the sort of east-west side of it, or rather, the south side of it. And as that overhangs the deck, the underside or the soffit is that same material again.
I think this simplification of two materials, the corrugated metal and the CMU block, I appreciate that it's gotten to that level of clarity and simplicity that I think just pushing it just to those two and not introducing, I know it's still metal and it's in the same color, I imagine. But keeping it all just that, to me is, because it's such limited amount of the flat, that I think that's kind of the end goal of most co-uses. Of course, the third material is this chain link that you've got as well, which is fine. It's another, you know, it's this lighter boundary situation. But those materials getting it down to that level of, I think, simplicity would create, in my mind, a level of clarity in the elegance of the diagram.
Okay.
Those are my design comments.
Great, thank you.
And I think the last thing with the, you know, I appreciate this project's got to move on its own timeline. You can't wait for AMP to do what they're looking to do. I was concerned with what was being proposed on the outside, I'd say, more than on the inside previously. But I think if it does progress and it moves forward, I'm assuming there'll be another opportunity to see here at the planning board level the strategies that are looking to be taken. Because my concern was just the distraction. Is it value-add? Is it distracting to the overall, you know, goals of the project? So that's for another day, of course.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much for your comments and your feedback, opening it up to other board members. For feedback, yes, Board Member Suve.
So I just want to spend a little bit of time echoing Board Member Wang's comments. You know, I think, you know, hearing about the community garden and then, you know, the other parts of the park that are planned, you know, for future development. It seems like the, you know, the VMT memo and the Parking and Demand Transition Memo could have kind of addressed some of the issues that are being raised in this meeting. You know, and I agree from this standpoint of if we were going to pick a site that is, you know, transit-rich, near bus lines, on this great pedestrian and bike route, that we should kind of also similarly be aspirational and match those aspirations with the parking that we end up deciding. I think where I'm kind of coming down or struggling to reach is some way to address this, these concerns, you know, in this meeting versus kind of going back, having the applicant go back and do some more analysis. And that can be kind of challenging, but that's kind of where I'm landing right now. I don't really, to have a specific recommendation in that regard, I mean, one way we could do it is just try and reduce the number of parking, you know, or we could try through the TDM plan, you know, require some level of reduction in vehicle trip, some specific requirement. So those are just my thoughts for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Board Member Ruiz.
President Cisneros, so thank you for the clarifying comments. And I not actually, you know, picked more comments, created more questions for me. Can we call back on the building plans again, please? Looking at this axonometrics, I appreciate that Board Member Sahiba gets the fence height. But now I don't get it. Because if it's a windbreaker, why is it perforated? That kind of defeats the purpose, in my opinion.
Right, yeah. If it were just the chain link fence, yes. But there's a fabric material that goes over the surface of it, pretty much like you'd see around tennis courts. Our, what we want to do, though, again, that's how we're going to actually get the windbreak quality on the fence. But then we're also planting hedges that will ultimately cover the fence. And so all you'll see is a tall hedge. But it's really, we have to rely on the windscreen and the fence to protect the pool deck from the wind.
Okay, go ahead, yes.
And one other clarifying aspect to that. The porosity of that windscreen is not the same as a tennis court. It's a little bit more solid so that it actually reduces the amount of wind that can penetrate through that. And the studies showed that it had to go up to a certain height in order to slow the wind as anyone who's biked through Gene Sweeney Park or runs through Gene Sweeney Park, there's a lot of wind in that park.
Yes, I've done that many times.
So again, it's similar in nature, but it is not as porous. And that's why it has to go up to a height, I think it's like almost 10 or 11 feet in order for it to provide that block. We're just trying to provide vegetation in front of it so it doesn't seem like as large of a mass.
Okay, thank you. And I agree with Board Member Sahiba's comment about that screen currently does look too dimensional. It does need to turn the corner somehow to terminate that. I also have issues with some hierarchy issues. Right now, looking at the Atlantic Avenue, it appears to be that the main entrance is off Atlantic. Looking at the signage, right in the middle, looking at that, if you're driving, right? Now we step back, it looks like that is the main entrance in the building. But looking at the plan, that does not look like the main entrance. The main entrance is off the Central Plaza.
Right, right.
So I would like you to work on that. I mean, that does not hold out the project. But regardless of what happens in the corner, building as a whole is showing that the main entrance, so there's some hierarchy signage issue that you need. They're both 20 feet tall, but one is bigger than the other.
Right.
That sends a different message.
Right, right. So we're doing a couple of things there. So on one hand, Atlantic being, again, pretty busy traffic-wise and all. So that's why the big letters appear there. And that's why it may kind of have that same look that we have at our main entry. But we thought it was important to brand it along that edge. We also are trying to give a little bit of presence along the Atlantic side as well. There's a fair amount of concrete apron there, again, that we have landscaping that will soften that ultimately. But there's an enormous amount of servicing to the pool and pool equipment that occurs right along that area. So it's giving the appearance, maybe, again, in this kind of raw drawing here, that there's entry being indicated there. Our sense is that once you're in the park environment or even you've entered the parking lot, that the front door should be pretty obvious. I mean, we want that to be the case. But again, the big letters and the branding, that's all about the traffic along Atlantic. And then, again, if we go to the interior plaza, I mean, that's the area where I think we break down the design a little bit more and a lot more human-scale. We're thinking of bikes, pedestrians, and all of that happening there.
Yeah, I mean, that is not going to stop me from, you know, I'm still in support of the project. I just want to point that out. And I trust that you will work with the staff to work out that level of details.
Sure.
To show hierarchy in terms of finish and in terms of arrival approach. That is something that the level that we don't need to get, at least, I don't think I need to get into. Because I just need to point something so that you can work out the details and, you know, show some clarity in wayfinding.
Understood, understood.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. And thank you to my fellow board members for your comments. I did have, like, a wondering, I guess, with, you know, the original, going back to parking, our favorite topic, going back to the original 60 parking spaces that was, you know, accounted for, you know, several years ago. And now we have an expanded number of uses with a pretty high demand of up to, I think it was like, I don't know, 150 visitors or whatever, max capacity. And the most, and you extrapolate from there from 60 to just 11 more, like, I'm just, and that is for this pool and these big events and the community garden already counted for. I ask that, I see, like, it's like a little bit of naught. I ask that just because it almost seems to me like an underestimate, like, the number of parking spaces, the 71, given like the amount of activity that's coming. So I just wanted to make sure I understand that, like, because I feel like there was a lot of conversation around like multiple uses happening here. And in a way, the analysis does take that into account with additional parking, but just not a huge amount. So I don't know if you want to respond to that.
Thank you very much, President Cisneros. We originally had planned for 93 spaces. And we have reduced it to 71 in that account because of our overflow parking agreement with the college, thinking that we could reduce the physical improvement on our site because we had some off-site opportunities to defer parking. So originally, when we did our program, it was actually a program to be higher than what we're proposing today. And so I know it's a reduction, but it's because we're trying to get that license agreement with the college. I want to be, just add one clarifying factor about that. The license agreement is able to be terminated by the college at any point. If they determine a future use for their property. This is not an easement. Blue Rise Ventures with Marina Village is not interested in easement. So what we're looking at here is a license agreement that can be terminated if they find other use for that property. So we're really depending on them as a true overflow or additional parking, should they keep the use the way it's at. And so I just want to add that clarifying fact to the discussion because it might help because it's, their availability is all private land. And whether they want to enter into an agreement with the city or not is completely upon them. So there's no guaranteed usage of the adjacent office park.
And therefore, the parking that's being proposed would be that much more constrained if you don't have that partnership.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Let's see, so I am also torn on this topic. I think, you know, a board member, Wang, you brought up some really great points that I'm very aligned with in terms of wanting to maximize our land use as much as possible. And I agree with a lot of the public comments that were provided and, you know, wanting to really explore creative alternatives. And I do find it challenging for me to want to minimize the number of parking spots much less. That is a discussion I'm very open to. And I think it's also a really great point how maybe the report could have prepared us a little bit more for this discussion. So right now, I'm, I don't know, I'm leaning towards, like, having like the 60 at least in terms of parking spaces. But I could definitely be convinced otherwise, like, given additional evidence. So that's, you know, a little bit where I'm at. And I support my fellow board members in terms of the recommendations with the design pieces. So I leave it up to the experts over there. But yeah, I guess, you know, with that, I'm just trying to skim my notes to see if there's any other big comments I want to elevate. I don't think so. With that, I guess I'll bring it back to the board to see if anyone would like to make a motion.
I'll give it a try. I move to approve the SECO addendum and design review and use permit application with the following conditions. One is update transportation memorandum to confirm multi-use parking requirements. Two is to work with staff to update the design and show hierarchy in wayfinding and signage, as well as exterior materials. Comma, eliminate two-dimensional perception of building elements.
Okay, so we have a motion. Does the board want to entertain a second or another motion? Oh, yes, Director Tai, yes.
Yes, sorry. President Cisneros, members of the board. Just a clarifying question to Board Member Ruiz's motion on updating the parking memo. You would like the Recreation and Parks Department and planning staff to do that prior to issuance of building permits? Just trying to make sure that those metrics are measurable. And specifically, we would, you would be asking staff to work with the traffic consultant to study the matter further, understand the shared use situation at the park. And then, what about, my question was, what about the off-site? Is the board having heartburn over the off-site lease arrangements? Understanding those are short-term? They could be terminated by the private party at any time?
I have no issues on the off-site agreement, but I'm going to open up to my fellow board member for their comments.
Yeah, that would help staff understand kind of the focus of it.
And I support that findings prior to building permit issuance.
And along those lines, if I may also just throw this question out there, would the board be amenable to conditioning this project to have a smaller parking ratio? There are a number of ways you could look at it, right? At the 3 per 1,000, currently 98 parking spaces, project's providing 71. If you choose to say, no, planning staff, that standard's too high, you believe for this project in a public park, 2 per 1,000 is more suitable. Then we could do the math. I think that maybe works out to 64 spaces. Or if you think that's even too high, reduce it. But just word of caution is, the fewer parking spaces we impose on the project, it does mean that if there is future demand, the city would need to spend money to expand the parking. So there is that, I mean, we would try to right-size it, but just, those are different options that we could consider.
Well, I guess I would love to be in a place to just negotiate and figure it out here. I mean, I'm part of why I would love to just look at those diagrams and kind of pull that green line to the right size would be so that we could move on to what, to approving what is otherwise an excellent project. But right now, I feel like we have missed out on a crucial piece of analysis regarding the use of the community garden. And so while I appreciate the motion that's on the table to amend the memo after approval, what I would prefer to see, or what I would prefer to do is to vote after I understand the analysis incorporating the other uses at the site.
And, you know, just to build off that, Board Member Wang, I appreciate where you're coming from. And I wonder if you're suggesting at all that the analysis comes back and we, you know, it's showing that we need more parking spaces? Or is it that you're feeling that in any case, we're going to be lower? And so, you know, where I'm kind of leaning towards is... And so, you know, where I'm kind of leaning towards is just today, and this is also a question for staff, is just going from 70 down to some other lower ratio, like, you know, 60, which is kind of more in that range that you identified. A question for staff on that is, you know, is that something we can do? And then do we need to provide, like, more direction, kind of practically, like, how does that happen? Like, where, where do you cut off where pavement is being built now? Or is that something we can leave up to the design team?
And to add on to that, thank you, Board Member Wang and Board Member Su, I appreciate your comments. My thoughts are, if we're to right-size, yes, I agree with you, appears to be that the community garden use was missed in the traffic consultant's analysis. Most likely that it would require more, and we can set, right, we can run either 2 per 1,000 or 3 per 1,000, because right now Parkland's parking requirement is zero. So we can set whatever that needs to be to the closest use. But if we're now somewhere in between, and if we, that swimming pool use come down to 60, that's what required, and right now we're providing 71, there is that cushion that, I look at that as a safety net for that additional use. That's why there's, I have a comfort level to propose the motion that's at the table.
And I just want a quick response to that. I would think that's kind of where my rambling question, comment was coming from, like, I wondered if it were to come back and incorporate the multiple uses, it would be that much more parking spaces, so I don't know, yeah. Does staff want to react?
Yes, so I would say that, trying to reconcile all of these different opinions, if you are able to comfortably make a decision that the range between 60 to 71 is the, are the two benchmarks, then a traffic study that would confirm what that, the actual number between that range would be appropriate. However, if there are reservations, that maybe there should be more than 71 spaces, then that would require, I would think, coming back to this board, to determine how many additional spaces are needed.
Can we share the screen? So planning board members, I asked staff to put up this chart because this is the table that our traffic consultant used to describe the typical parking demand, and as Board Member Ruiz noted, there is a little bit of cushion because these studies are not an exact science. And in fact, I do worry that if we were to take this exercise back to our traffic consultant and have them study the combined demand of a community garden, again, community garden is not something that is, unlike a grocery store, you know, a pretty typical use that have a set demand patterns. I just feel like that might be yet another exercise where, where we're kind of dancing around the fringes and really not getting us the satisfaction we need in terms of having some concrete data. What I think we could do tonight is, if the board is open to it, is to look at this table, and if you believe that the bar is set a little bit too high, I mean, how much cushion do we want to do? Right now, the cushion is, hey, we believe 71 spaces on site is a sweet spot, that's staff's recommendation. In addition, we have planned for short leases off-site for overflows. Once the project is built and the facility's in use, we could continue, and I think our project requirements include continuing to monitor the parking to see if, whether it is too much supply or too little supply and reassess. So there are different options, but I think, you know, another fallback would be, hey, no additional parking, stick with the plan that the city approved back in 2015 with 60 parking spaces. It'd be a smaller parking lot, but I think having some direction tonight is also important, understanding that there is wide support for the project, and we are only, we are looking at the parking issue, but, but let's not lose sight of the importance of moving the Aquatic Center project forward.
I have a comment, because I'm being the troublesome one here.
No, no.
You know, I'd like to look at this and figure something out, but my problem is that the analysis, as I mentioned before, is premised on this notion that 90 to 100% of auto trips are being taken by car. And yet, we have in our draft resolution that this project is sitting on the Cross Alameda Trail, it's next to a bunch of bus lines, we're building out these pedestrian trails. Like I said, I'm having trouble tying those things together logically, but I understand, you know, a desire to move forward and be pragmatic about this. So I would say what I could support is going back to the 60. I would also, I would also say that we should proactively identify a mode split target. So first of all, I would say never mind the 90 to 100, I would, I would really be interested in, in getting pencils sharpened on that. But more importantly, I do think there should be a proactive mode split target here, and the TDM plan should go beyond passive information dissemination. I think we should incorporate some of the suggestions that came through public comment. And so what I mean, what I mean by that is, and I want to articulate it here, you know, through the active transportation plan and through the climate action and resiliency plan, the city, this city has taken positions of leadership on citywide mode shift. And so I do think that city agencies have a responsibility to embody that leadership. And so that's not about telling people that there's a bus line next to them, that is about embodying a culture of mode shift. And so that, I think one of the letters included this, like, providing disincentives or incentives to people, having that bike-in night or having, having bike-and-bus trips be discounted somehow. So I would encourage you, well, I would say, I would support a TDM plan that builds in more proactive measures beyond information dissemination, and I could support a parking count of 60.
Board Member Sahiba?
Yeah, I had a comment. Well, first, I wanted to support Board Member Ruiz's motion to proceed. I think I could support a count of 67. And the reason I'm...
Sorry. Did you say 67?
Yes, I did. I said 67.
Okay.
Because I see four stalls that I think are, I mean, look, this is the third time this project's come here, so it's not like we haven't been looking at this. And every time, I think, you know, the arrival experience has improved, the drop-off as well. But when you first enter this parking lot, there's the, there's a stall that's directly, well, depends when you're entering, I guess, directly to your left, that should really just be a green strip to connect with that threshold that's on the other side. So on the right, if you're looking at the plan, I'm looking at L 1.01. And then the two stalls that are directly on the other side of the drop-off, those, if they were eliminated, they would create another sort of T-green element, similar to bracket the stalls, basically, like, it is doing in some locations where these stalls are being bracketed, and then one at the very end. So, well, I just subtracted four out of the 71 because those are the four stalls that I felt like could be eliminated to improve the experience of arrival in this parking lot. But I agree, if this gets looked at again, the demand is probably going to go in the other direction. I think one has to acknowledge that this is a unique facility, there's going to be people coming from other places, and as much as there's multiple ways of getting here in different modes of transportation, if you're coming from distance to a meet or something here, I think there might be some challenges using those different means of transportation. You might end up driving. So in my mind, this is not a typical facility, it's a destination-type facility, and it's gonna, well, that plus all the other action that's going to eventually happen as Jean Sweeney Open Space continues to, I think, get, you know, further momentum with programming, it's just going to create more demand, quite honestly. So those 67, I just want to make this plan feel a little bit more generous when you, when you drive in, but if it sticks with 71, I'm not going to, you know, have a huge problem. I just think there's a little bit more green, sort of, arrival experience that one can create, I think, with a few spots eliminated. So that's where I'm at. Thanks.
Thank you. Board Member Ruiz?
I amend my motion to support 67 spaces.
Interesting, okay. Any other comments?
Just a clarification, so are you also removing the requirement, did they update the memo as well and just, parking is just 67?
Yes.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, yeah. And no, I guess two absences or abstentions. Okay, and I guess with that, the motion passes. Oh, yes, staff?
Sorry, Board Member Wang's aye was a aye or a no?
It was just a delayed aye.
Delayed aye, thank you.
Oh, it was a aye. Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, I'm glad you asked the follow-up.
So that motion passes 5-0, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate the community also commenting to make this project better, thank you.
All right, great. Yeah, thank you so much to the staff, the applicant, to members of the public, and to my fellow board members. With that, we'll close Agenda Item 5A and move on to staff communications, 6A, 6B.
So under 6A, only two staff-level design reviews, residential remodels. And then for 6B, coming July 1, City Council meeting, President Cisneros and Board Member Wang, you are up for reappointment in front of the City Council. The planning board meeting of Monday, July 14 will be canceled. We don't have any items teed up, so you can enjoy your summer plans that week. At your last meeting, you had approved a use permit for the gas station. That decision has been appealed to the City Council, and we are targeting the July 15 City Council hearing for that appeal. And then otherwise, at the end of July, on July 28, we are planning a board meeting and hope to present to you a 356-unit multifamily residential development for approval. So a rare occurrence to have a development project come before this board.
Sorry, when is our next meeting?
So your next meeting, July 14 will be canceled, and so July 28, for second meeting in July, we are still planning to have a meeting. And then after that, in August, will be your summer recess.
Great, thank you. Any public comments for Agenda Item 6?
No public comments.
Okay, great, we'll go ahead and close that out, and moving on to board communications. Scanning, see none, all right. Any members of the public would like to speak on a non-agenda item on Zoom or online?
Don't see any hands.
Okay, all right, and with that, we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.